All right, folks. We will go ahead and get this meeting in the Richland City Council to order. And if you would all please rise and join us in the building, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands before its enemies, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for joining us on that. The floor from our call away.
Mrs. Abrams.
Here.
Mr. Fetch. Mr. Grimmer.
Here.
Mr. Hine.
Here.
Mrs. Norris.
Here.
Mr. Purcell.
Here.
Mr. Satell.
Here.
Mr. Zimmer.
Here.
We have seven council members present tonight. Council member Fetch is on the road traveling, so unfortunately he couldn't join us. We now have the agenda approval, item D, due approval, second. Motion's made in second for approval of tonight's agenda. Further comments or discussion, council member April.
Yes, sir. While setting up my packet for tonight's meeting and reading stuff, I noticed that we have two liquor licenses under the same number, three.
Just make it.
And they should be, so that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to move that we make the second one, the Madcrab 3A.
Second.
So our numbering will be back in part.
Motion's made in second to amend the agenda tonight to make the beer and wine license for the Madcrab 3A. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Further comments, suggestions, changes, additions to the agenda? If not, those in favor of the amended agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. We are now down to the public portion of tonight's meeting. This is the opportunity for any members of the public to come forward. I have one card from Lawrence Paskey.
Paskey.
Paskey. Come on forward.
My name is Larry Paskey, 375250. Wanted to comment on the proposed bill 204, with respect to each permit.
Now, you can wait on that because we have another public hearing coming up. If you can wait on that or...
I could go ahead and make my comments now. I have that to be probably some.
Oh, okay.
My wife and I are part of the neighborhood, and we talk to some of our neighbors who are very much against this. This is a residential area south and to the west of which is proposed. We have commercial property to the north and to the east. In a meeting in April when they were discussing this, they talked about how this would have 60 beds, be open 14 hours a day, they could handle patients in 45 minutes. It sounded like they could put through over 1,000 people a day in this facility. So all of a sudden, right in the middle of residential and commercial, we put this high-volume medical facility. It seems like we have areas in Richland that are designed for medical facilities, and putting in right next to our residents would be detrimental to our home. So we're very much against it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fetch. You know, how long are you going to stay tonight? Are you going to be here for about another half hour or so? Because you made me repeat because we have a quiz for the night room. They take those comments down and say pardon.
You have another repeat?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No. So I may call you back out, or you can repeat it again just so it gets down on the record.
Very good.
Okay? Thank you. Further comments or questions on anything on the agenda or to discuss with the administration? Saying that, we'll close the public portion, then just remember we do have another public hearing coming up shortly with regards to the matter of just the Paskey just brought. Okay. We will go on to approval of the May 1st, 2019 council meeting minutes. Council member Grimmer.
Hey, yes, so I have a minor correction page.
Right, move the proof minutes.
Okay, move the proof.
Second. Motion's made in second. Council member.
Minor correction, page four, item eight. And it shows that Mrs. Abrams, second for the first reading of the bill. The second line should be moved to table. The bill was tabled, it wasn't read for second.
All right. Second. Motion's made in second to amend it by table and stuff.
Correct.
Further comments, questions on that? Those in favor of the closed amendments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Council member.
Yes, I was going to make the same correction.
I saw that.
That wasn't a second reading, it was tabled, it should have been tabled.
Thank you. Further comments or questions on the minutes? Those in favor of the amended minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Announcements and appointments. I laid before you all at council tonight some proposed appointments to various boards and commissions. These are reappointments and reappointments. You all should have a copy of those at your place.
Motion to approve all these as a group.
Second.
Motion's made in second to approve all the proposed appointments and reappointments as a group. Further comments or questions? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Thank you all very much. These individuals, I'm sure, will do a fine job for the city, serving on its many boards and commissions. Council member Satell.
Yeah, I got one question on this here. Where are you at on filling the rest of the vacancies? Is that something we still need to keep working on?
I'm still working on it, and particularly I need a few other first wards. We have some...
You've been bringing that up in our ward, so it's very...
Bring that forward for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are to the point now that we will recess the regular council meeting. We are ordered to hold a public hearing for a petition for a special use permit for a medical clinic above Long Bay House at 3715 North Lindbergh Boulevard. Mr. Greitens, do you want to start us off? And this one, I'll have to swear everybody in this present. Raise your hand, please. You swore to tell the truth, all the truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
I'm Mr. Greitens, I'm in 100th Street, City Avenue, 12255, North Ridge Road, Richland Avenue, 63044.
Proceed, thank you.
I do have, I don't know if this is working. You gotta hold it right there. Okay. Bye. I'll talk a lot later. I have a list of exhibits, and they are as follows. A copy of the report to the mayor and city council from the planning and zoning commission dated May 2019. A copy of the staff report to the planning and zoning commission dated April 3rd, 2019. A copy of the planning and zoning commission minutes from the April 8th, 2019 meeting. A copy of site plan to the proposal, and then by reference for number 70-25, the zoning ordinance that was amended through April 13, 2019.
So you might ask that those be included into the minutes of this meeting?
Yes, they have been marked by the report.
So are.
As Exhibit A.
Exhibit A is entered into the rec, thank you.
So this is a petition for a special use permit. This is application 19-PZ-04. The property is 3715 North Lindbergh Boulevard. Their request is for a special use permit approval to allow a private elimination facility, which falls under our definition of a medical clinic as defined in the zoning ordinance. The property is 3.84 acres. It has perds on Lindbergh Boulevard to the east, Blade Drive to the north, and TP Road to the west. There is, there are three curts with access to each of those roads. The property itself is selling V2. There is V2 zoning to north and east and south, and then R4 zoning to the west, and then to the south also, along the east side of TP Road. In terms of surrounding land use, there's commercial to the northeast and south along Lindbergh Boulevard, and then a single family residential to the west and to the south along TP Road. The site itself was most recently used as the value city furniture, furniture building. It's been vacant for over a year. I have a few images of the, of the site. This is from P East to the west. This is looking east, and then this is from the intersection of Lindbergh and Lake. And then from, this is from over on the northwest crossing, commercial center. There's a, there's a, on the left-hand side of the picture, where they mean assis Cleveland Design, there's a bus stop, a metro bus stop located there also. A few items that I want to just mention from the staff report that was included in your packet. A couple applicable sections of the comprehensive plan from the goals and objectives, states to stabilize business districts and encourage infill, and then to promote economic diversification. On review of the applicant's proposal, one thing I'd recommend tonight, I apologize. The proposal also is to, and this is covered site plan, is to remove on the west side of the building, to remove a 5,000 square foot addition that was used for loading. To remove that, so the resulting square meters of the building would be approximately 34,000 square feet, 35,000 square feet, and then to split the building into two tenant spaces. The applicant is proposing to occupy the eastern tenant space, and then the western tenant space that remains would be for a future tenant, which is not known at this time. In terms of who that would be marketed to, I would refer to the applicant for any question on that. On review of the proposal, the staff came that the traffic generation would not be designated as surrounding traffic, that the existing traffic street network would be able to handle the traffic proposed. Regarding parking, the site would be compliant with parking requirements and zoning ordinance. And one item we considered too was looking at future parking depending on the future user of the space to the west, and even when that's occupied, they'll have sufficient parking to comply with the ordinance's requirements for parking. Part of their plan is to, when they remove that addition, is to increase the parking volume. There's significant number of spaces. A couple concerns that staff had on the plan was, was in terms of landscaping. We would make a recommendation to add more landscaping to the west of the parking lot, and additional screening, landscaping screening between the property and the residential area to the west. So that was included in a list of conditions. So if council were to approve the proposal, there are four conditions listed in the ordinance that staff recommend be part of that approval. I do have, this is an image of the, of the facility in St. Peters, that's the only one in the area. I just wanted to include that. And then I do have some slides of the site plan that was included in your packet as well. This was sort of landscaping, and this shows the new layout after, in addition to you removed, a new parking and landscape islands added. That's all I have. Still have any questions?
Questions of Mr. Greitens? Anyone? Very good, thank you.
I did want to add, for that to mention, so this went to the planning commission at the April 8th meeting, and the public hearings held, the planning commission made a recommendation of disapproval by both three in favor and four against.
Very good. Council member Grimmer.
Yep, just to make sure, Mr. Greitens, the BioLife people will occupy the eastern section of the building, which is the section that abuts North Lindbergh Boulevard.
Correct.
And as I also understand in reading in the packet, that the other tenant, as well as the BioLife people, will use their loading dock or loading facilities also off of North Lindbergh.
Correct, that's what they stated right there.
So all that activity is going to be basically off of North Lindbergh.
Correct.
Their, their location adjacent and the loading dock, okay? And even for the other tenant, that prospective tenant on the other side. There's a corridor, they said, that goes through there that allows them access to that.
Correct, and I don't know which, which show it the best.
Well, it's, it's in, it's in the, it's in the packet.
Yes, and you can see to the south of the building, that's what access is. No question.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Further comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Greitens. Will the petitioner like to step forward? Please give us your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Dan Manning, I'm the land use attorney for the petitioner, J C W Development. My address is 16090 Swinley Ridge Road, Chesterville, Missouri.
I've sworn you in. You swore to tell the truth, all the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Proceed.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, as I said, my name is Dan Manning, I'm the land use attorney for the applicant this evening. With me tonight is Jeff Terrace for J C W Development, who's overseeing the redevelopment of his property, should the special use permit be approved. And Sam Chymat, who's a 13-year employee of BioLife Biolyte Services, is the current manager of the St. Peters Center. Jeff is going to tell you a little bit about BioLife and the redevelopment plans for the site. Sam will be available to answer any questions you might have about BioLife and their day-to-day operations. I'm just going to kick things off by discussing the city's standards for analyzing special use permit applications, and our proposals compliance with those standards. The city has five standards for evaluating special use permit applications. Their impact on traffic conditions, the accuracy of parking, creation of any fire hazards, the impact on the character of the surrounding neighborhood, the accuracy of the public utilities servicing the property, and finally, the impact on the general welfare of the community. Zach did an excellent job analyzing these issues in his staff report, so the bill will win majority, won't concede this evening, this is primarily going to have that with Zach's reporting. With respect to evaluating traffic conditions and parking, staff analyzed this issue and concluded that there were no detrimental impact on surrounding traffic conditions or internal site circulation. Additionally, increased traffic generation, parking demand will not be significant enough to cause any negative impact on surrounding parking. Most significantly, at least to me, staff received comments from Missouri Department of Transportation respecting this proposal, and there were no doubts in the proposal. And finally, as Zach mentioned in his comments, the number of parking spaces on the site will exceed the parking requirements for the proposed use, and for any potential tenant that will go in and add a western portion of the building once it's done and redeveloped. With respect to fire hazards, the Pattonville Fire Protection District was notified and provided with our application. If you have any comments? With respect to the character of the neighborhood, staff analyzed this use and how it would impact the surrounding neighborhood, from planning and zoning perspective, and they concluded that the proposed use will not negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood character, and will be compatible with surrounding uses, which consist of a broad mix of commercial uses. Additionally, the proposed improvements on the site, which will include the marketing hub repairs, restripping, the side improvements, and additional landscaping and buffering, will improve the appearance, function of the site, and make it further compatible with the neighborhood character. Finally, the proposed hours of operation for this use are reasonable, will not result in any negative impact on the surrounding land uses. First, impact on public utilities, all of the major utility providers provided with the application. Do not provide any comments or objections. And finally, the general welfare to the community, this is directed from the staff report, proposed use needs to review criteria for special use permits, and if approved, will not have a detrimental impact on the general welfare of the community. And finally, there was also a section on the comprehensive plan and its general zoning analysis. It noted that the proposed business is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, and it would provide an additional service to commercial and residential clients in the immediate region. In particular, plenty of comprehensive planning goals that are called out are stabilizing the business district development for Boulevard, encouraging infill development, and promoting economic diversification. At this point, I'm going to turn things over to Jeff Terrace, so that he can discuss BioLife a little bit, and also discuss the redevelopment plans for the property. I'll conclude my portion just by saying that we take a lot of pride in our proposal and our operation, as some of the council members saw when they visited the St. Peters location. It's a good, well-run, clean operation, and if any of the other council members haven't had a chance to get out to the St. Peters location would like to, we would be more than happy to host you and, excuse me, provide you a tour of that facility. So that, I'll turn it over to Jeff to discuss the proposal. And I'll be available for any questions once Jeff's finished.
Thank you. So I swore you in to, this time I swore to tell the truth, all the truth, nothing but the truth. Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Jeff Terrace, J C W Development, 100 Tower Drive, Eberdam, Wisconsin, 53916.
Proceed, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to tell you a little bit about BioLife, and it'll be a little bit repetition for some people that already been there, but it'll be benefit of everyone to hear a little bit about it. BioLife is a fully owned subsidiary of the state of pharmaceuticals, which is an international pharmaceutical manufacturing biomedical firm. Their U.S. office is based in Boston, Massachusetts, and what BioLife does as a subsidiary to this company is they collect plasma that is sent to their manufacturing facilities. They have two in the U.S., three in the U.S. actually, in other states. But basically, they're collecting the raw materials that these facilities are using to manufacture their treatments. The treatments are used for people with hemophilia, people with immune deficiencies, and people with traumatic injuries. I would use to keep people from bleeding out in surgeries, or is it brought in in ambulances and whatnot. It's really not an exaggeration to say that potentially someone's life in this room, or a loved one of somebody's life could be saved or improved with these therapies from, from BioLife plasma that's collected there. Talk a little bit about the operations. The company really has an emphasis on low wait times. The average donor is going to be in the center for a lot and out, and that goes through the physical, the pre-processing, and the actual donation. They'll only take a lockup if there's an open appointment available at the time of the lockup. Most of their appointments are made on a map that they developed. You can just go into Schmart.com, kind of like reserving a table in a restaurant, place the, you know, the notice on there, and you can get yourself an appointment. So there's really minimal loitering, really no loitering is allowed, and minimal wait times and whatnot. The centers move pretty, pretty quickly. All the centers have at least one supervising doctor and five nurses on staff. As I mentioned, you know, no loitering, no cash. We call them donors, it's a little bit of a misnomer, they're not truly donating, they are being compensated, but they're not being compensated with cash, they're compensated with a prepaid debit card. That's because there's no cash kept on the facility, no cash paid. The facility will be licensed by FDA, the Food and Drug Administration. It's licensed, it's inspected, it complies with all FDA standards, and that includes disposal of any biomedical waste, used syringes and needles and whatnot, used to collect the plasma, is all FDA compliant. It's a, it's a pretty rigorous process to be licensed by the FDA. The donors, every donor is going to receive a physical when they, they come in before every donation. If they don't meet the vital sign requirements, blood cell levels, they're going to be deferred. If they appear to be under the influence of any substance, they're going to be deferred, potentially even permanently depending on what, what, what it appears to be. Eighty-six percent of BioLife donors are either employed, students, retired, or homemakers. It's a, it's a pretty representative population sample of the community in which it's based. The donors have to have an ID, and they have to share proof of residency. When they come in, they're, they're put into a national registry, they're assigned a unique number, and they're able to be tracked in the system that way. All the plasma on site is tested multiple times for its use in any therapies, and if any samples are found to be tainted in any way or not suitable for use, not only are Zach's sample thrown away, but anything from that donor that would be frozen anywhere in the system would also be destroyed and disposed of. Employments, BioLife is going to bring jobs to the community. They're going to bring 50 to 80 jobs to this new facility, about half full and about half parked. These positions include nurses, phlebotomists, operations managers, quality control, et cetera. These are good jobs. All the employees, whether they're full-time or part-time, receive paid time off on, on day one. They receive medical benefits. That's very rare, I like to point that out, in, in part-time jobs these days, to actually come on board with a part-time job that pays medical benefits. There's also opportunities for tuition reimbursement. BioLife emphasizes promotion from within the company. I'll, I'll bring Sam up in a little bit to answer any operation questions, but Sam's been with the company 13 years, and she was currently promoted to the manager, recently promoted to the manager of the St. Peters facility, and she's a great success story within the company. This, as I said, is an international biomedical firm. It's, it's, and they emphasize promotions from within, so this could be a stepping stone to other, you know, possibilities of employment. The good neighbor policies that BioLife brings. They operate over 100 facilities throughout the U.S. I'll, I'll show you a map here of some of the locations. Six of them are in Missouri, St. Peters is the, is the closest to here. Community service is encouraged. One day a year at least, a company, every facility closes for the day so that the staff can go and do volunteer work in the community. They volunteer over 10,000 hours a year in their communities, and each center is an active member of the local chamber of commerce. This would not be an exception, this is, this is, hopefully, we do the rich as well. I mentioned that the donors, donors are compensated. They're compensated to the tune of approximately, on average, by facility approximately $3 million a year. And because they're compensated with debit cards, we're able to see where the debit cards are spent. Can't see to the level that they're, what they're spent on, but we can see where they're spent. Approximately 80% of that is going to be spent in the same community in which the facility is located. So simple math, 80%, that's about $2.4 million that would be typically, we would expect to see spent within the community from the people that come to, to sell the plasma. In addition to that, and in addition to the purchase of the land and the vacant building, BioLife's been invested between $3 and $4 million just on their piece of the building that they're going to rehab and repurpose for their facility. And that's also improving the site, resurfacing the parking lot, replacing a, beyond its life, retaining wall along one of the property lines that's deteriorating wood, retaining walls, landscaping, et cetera. Going to make the building look, look new. As I said, about half of the buildings is going to be leased to another tenant, commercial tenant. We haven't really started marketing the property yet, because we want to see how this process goes before we get into that, but we would anticipate a retail use of some type. Some of the people that our broker has recommended would be like a hardware-type store, cabinet-type store, flooring, furniture, et cetera, something like that, as a showroom as well, and it's a, a retail facility. And this building has been vacant for a broker here that we want to repurpose. So here's the map, I mentioned the facility locations. Like I said, you can see the six in Missouri, St. Peters, is the, is the closest to there. This is just a concept plan of the site, where you can see we're planning on doing landscaping enhancements in the, in the proper area there, retaining wall replacement. We're going to add some parking spaces where the appendage was built, and this is kind of our, our early concept of what we think it will look like. This is just a rendering, we haven't gone too far down the road, this is an actual stone, but this is an idea of what we think it will look like. Obviously, the piece on the right is pretty subject to change depending on who's ultimately goes in there. Just another view. That's the entrance of a typical BioLife, that's where you're greeted when you come in and you first start the process. This is that, and where some of the testing is done, and the blood samples are, are drawn. Just the point of this is just to show you that it's, it's a medical facility, it's clean, it's new, it's bright, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not a derivative lab or anything. These are, these are the donor beds, they would actually be in while they're having their plasma drawn. And this is our supervised play area. As I mentioned, we do provide free daycare to anyone who comes in to sell plasma while they're in the process. As I mentioned, we do provide free daycare to anyone who comes in to sell plasma while they're in the process. An employee manages this, a BioLife employee manages this area, and you have a place for the kids to be during the process. So that's the bulk of my presentation. As I said, Sam is here, she is the St. Peters manager. So depending on your question, if it's construction development related, I'll field it if it's an operation.
That's all, then your council members, if you have any questions, let's go ahead and finish out the three of them, and then we'll bring all three back up and question at that time. So Samantha, do you want to come forward? Please raise your hand, Samantha Stewart, tell the truth, tell the truth, enough about the truth.
I do.
Step up a little closer, and give us your name and address, please.
Samantha Chymak, and it's ten eighteen Jefferson Street, Missouri.
Can you spell the last name? Thank you, proceed.
I'm just up here, and if you guys have any questions directly related to operations of the center, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Okay, so then I guess we'll open it up for questions. I would remind everybody, we're focused just on this facility. I know several have been out to the facility out there in St. Peters. We're not talking about that facility here, we're talking about this proposed development in the city, so keep it focused right on this. Thank you, council member Hine.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, you did say that BioLife will be purchasing the property.
That's correct.
So it'd be owner-occupant, I like that.
Yes, well, my company would be purchasing the property and developing it for BioLife.
Okay, and then I wanted to hear a little bit about the success story, about where you started and how you got to where you're in.
I actually started about fifteen years ago. I started in Springfield, Missouri, there's a center located there. I started there right after I finished college. I started at the front building of the medical history where a lot of the prospective donors to determine their eligibility for the day happened. During my time, I worked with the Springfield Center for a couple of years. I then relocated to Hayden, Idaho, and helped open that facility as a center supervisor. I stayed at that facility and that position for about two years, and then I took the assistant manager position with that facility. I stayed there another three years before deciding to move back to Missouri since that's where I'm originally from. So when the St. Peters location opened, I transferred as assistant manager to this facility. And then currently, back in February, I took that as the old center manager.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hine.
Mr. Harris, you mentioned four to, three to four million for a year portion, and then in the planning and zoning, it had much higher, I think it was five to, five point three million, is that the total, everything?
We would expect to spend the additional difference doing something with the other half of the dollars. We need just the three to four million just to get the site and the BioLife piece up to present standard, too.
And then one more question, is there any way we could get a copy of your presentation before the next meeting? Is that possible?
Yeah, absolutely. Zach has to circulate.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Grant, you can make sure everybody in council gets a copy, thank you. Councilmember Hine.
Yes, to Samantha, essentially what we looked at, at your St. Peters facility, that's your standard operating model, so we could expect to see more or less the same setup, the same arrangements in our facility here in Bridgeton, should prove it.
Yes, I believe the layout might be slightly different, but the way that it's set up and how people are processed through will be the same.
Okay, so that's more or less the standard business operating model that you guys use throughout your system, throughout the system, thank you.
Very good, councilmembers, tell.
Yes, a couple of things. One looks like on your drawing, you plan on kind of reopening some windows on the front along Lindbergh, which used to be there when it was the old Peterman's back in the sixties, but I take that from your drawing, you'll get more natural light into the front also?
Yes, that's correct, there are going to be some offices in the front as well as some conference rooms and whatnot, and that has much natural light you can get.
I did like your proposal on your landscaping, redoing the walls and stuff. Some of that wall was replaced recently, a couple of years ago, but they never finished the whole thing. And so you see, you brought up about the rest of the wooden ties.
Absolutely, that was one of the first things I saw.
Some of that holds up some residential homes that are right behind us right there, that didn't live there on Fifi for a while. Basically, most of their life, they lived in that vicinity right there. So I heard a lot, quite a bit from the citizens, I live also on Fifi Road right by Steak and Shake, so I mean, it's within walking distance of myself and some of the citizens that are here. You know, and I was at the meeting, your design meeting, didn't speak up then, but you know, other people spoke, you know, against it somewhat, along with the, your vote that you heard, the four-three vote, you know. And some of the concerns that I heard at that meeting, and also citizens since then, is where you're allowing even just sixteen-year-olds to come in and be able to give plasma, and that was what you testified, you know, that's what you guys testified. I mean, you gotta be eighteen to buy cigarettes, you know, as soon as they have a photo ID, you know, and I just believe that the sixteen restrictions should be, at least the minimum, be an adult that's eighteen or older, you know, so. And that was just from your meeting that I heard, I think that's why you got the four-three vote, you know, the way it turned out. But maybe you can address that today, thank you.
Yeah, I can address that, you do have to be eighteen to be able to donate. So the photo identification that you bring in, you have to be of age to be able to see it and enter into the process.
That wasn't what the comments were at the planning and zoning, I think that's why you got the vote you did, that's all.
And councilmember Purcell.
Thank you, Mayor. I was one of the council members that came and took a tour of the facility. I came a couple of weeks ago with councilmember Hine over there, and to be honest, before I came, I had this kind of preconceived notion, which later turned out to be a misconception, of what type of facility that you run. And as you probably heard a little bit earlier, there are some citizens that live around there that, you know, have some concerns. And I'm not saying that those concerns are misconceptions or anything like that, but I do have a couple of quick questions that maybe will help clarify or maybe ease those burdens a little bit. First, as councilman Grimo pointed out, and you answered, that this building will be very similar to the one in St. Peters. Do you know how long the building in St. Peters has actually been there?
We opened our doors March twenty-first of twenty-seventeen. The building was built a couple of months before that, so it's been there for about three years at this point.
And is there any way you could speak to the type of maintenance or upkeep that you guys keep on your property? Because that building looked brand-new to me, and you just told me that it's been there for two years.
Yes, so we maintain the building, we do walkthroughs on a monthly basis to make sure that everything is still up to code and that safety standards that BioLife has put in place are passed throughout this building. And that includes not only the inside, but also the outside. So the landscaping, the parking lot, all of that kind of stuff gets reviewed on a monthly basis and a banking account. To be outward, we put in reporters and get corrected immediately.
One other misconception that I had prior to attending the facility was that this type of business may attract the wrong type of clientele, if you will. And I don't think anyone sitting up here wants the wrong type of patron, you know, visiting our city, if you get my drift. Maybe you can speak to it from the St. Peters facility. Do you guys have a strong connection with the local police department? And further, do you feel that there's often a need to contact the police department based on somebody coming into your facility?
We have, you know, strong relationships with fire, car, and police department throughout our community, within a sense within that area. However, in my time there, we have not really had, we've actually not had to call the police. They have come to the center on occasion, that's on their own basis, but we've not had any issues as far as the donors within the center where we had to contact law enforcement.
Just two more quick things. First, what percentage, can you tell us what percentage of people that attempt to come in and donate get rejected?
I don't have an exact percentage, but we do a strenuous testing, as mentioned during the presentation. Every person that comes in has to pass their vital requirements from the day, would be the first step. Someone that's coming for the first time is required to do a physical with the nurses that we have on staff. And part of that is answering, you know, a medical questionnaire, that includes quite a bit of medical history. So for people that are getting deferred and not making it through the process, that's typically where we see that happen. If they're deferred for medical conditions or medications that they're taking. Sometimes it is a permanent deferral, depending on the situation. There are other times where we require more information from their care provider before we'll listen to just donate.
Okay, and I know what this means, but just to be clear, when you say defer, I've heard that a few times, that means you turn them away and say, gee, I'm sorry, you can't donate, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and the last thing, at the beginning of the presentation, you know, the statement was made, look, this plasma goes to, you know, build and use medications, and, you know, can save people's lives. I've done the research, I know some of the council members have, as to the benefits of plasma. I know this is a product, if you will, that is in huge demand. I guess my question is, you guys send all of that away to like a refining facility or something like that? None of that actually stays here in the community, is that correct?
We send it away to the manufacturing facilities, but then once it is processed into medication, that gets distributed throughout the country. So yes, some of it will come back to the community specifically.
Excellent, thank you so much for answering my questions, and I really appreciate you guys having, you know, an employee or someone from the actual company being here, thank you so much.
Councilmember Hine.
Thank you, that's a good point, you know, seeing him first class, I had some hesitations before I went on the tour, but going on the tour, it was very thorough, and it eliminated a lot of my hesitations. But I think another point that you might want to touch on is your biohazard material, how it's disposed of, and then also the non-biohazard material, I had some questions about that. And so the tour continued outside, and we were shown their area that's enclosed where their dumpsters are. And we were told a number of times that they're picked up a week for the non-biohazard material. But I'll let them go ahead and explain about the biohazard material.
Yes, so all the biohazard material that we collect within the center is collected into a biohazard waste container that is kept in a locked room in the facility until it is picked up by our biomedical waste provider. They come twice a week to pick up that stuff, and everything is completely tracked. Each container that goes out of our facility has a tracking number on it so that we can ensure that it's been disposed properly. Nobody has access to that except for a few members of management and also the waste pickup facilitator that comes. As far as the non-biomedical waste that is kept, our dumpster, our cardboard and trash area is in an enclosed, and it's also locked at all times, so again, no one has access to that except for the staff when they are taking out the waste.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hines.
Thank you, I also visited the site, I was, also had reservations about the program. I thought you just went in and donated blood and they did their thing, but it's quite an operation. There was some concern on the amount of cars. What is your employee, it says in one place sixty to eighty, I mean, is that shifting as it's fourteen hours a day? I mean, do you have people coming in and out?
Yeah, we have, we are open up to fourteen hours a day, so we have two different shifts that come essentially. So as far as having employees in the building at any given time, typically we have anywhere from thirty to thirty-five people working in the building on any given shift, depending on the day.
And, you know, I was there, I said, I saw the customers coming in, and it was all in different sections, and the parking was ample, you know, I said I didn't see any backup of traffic or anything coming in or out of there. So you have, it was like forty-five minutes to fill out this, what is your first timers, how long does that take?
So the first time that people come in, because there is the ad process of that medical questionnaire that people have to take, that's much more in-depth than the questionnaire that they answer every time. And then there's also the physical portion with the nurse, we do tell people to allow for two hours on their very first donation. Once that's completed, it's typically an hour for them to come in, answer your questions, get screened into your actual donation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hine.
Samantha, what do you have to do to go through this FAA or FDA approval? Is that, is there any, what, just sort of run us through what you have to do to be FDA approved?
Yes, so we have, we're the FDA, on our first audit with them, it's a free licensure, so they come in after the center's been open for about ten months, I think is what they typically shoot for. They review all documentation, basically for everything that we have in the center during that time, all of our processes, our SOPs, any capacity, you know, as mentioned, sometimes we do have stores come in, if the plasma seems unusable, we have a process for that, and we have documentation and trackability for all of those units that FDA will set all of those types of processes to determine if we can get our donation.
Councilmember Hine.
I just wanted to point out the gentleman that spoke during the public portion, he was fearful a thousand patients per day would be coming through there. We were told that they averaged four hundred per day, and they're even open in the weekends, but the number's a little bit less on the weekends, so, thank you.
Any comments or questions? Thank you, council, did you want to enter your presentations as part of the record of this meeting?
Yes.
Request that?
I need to request to enter our presentation as part of the record of this meeting.
All right, thank you all very much. We'll now open it up to comments or questions from the public. Mr. Pachsky, do you want to come back up, sorry about that.
No problem, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
My name is up.
Right, sorry. You saw the word, tell the truth, tell the truth, enough about the truth.
Yes, I do.
Get the state your name and address.
Mark Pachsky, thirty-seven sixty-two, PP.
Very good, proceed, sir.
Again, I wanted to talk about the character of the neighborhood, I had one of the items three on your list of why you would give a special use permit, the character of the neighborhood. Right now, the neighborhood is commercial, that particular piece of property, and also to the east and north, and it's worked out very well, and we've got residential to the west and to the south. We're adding a high-volume medical facility. I just took a thousand, they said forty-five minutes, sixty minutes, fourteen hours, the potential is over a thousand. So here's a high-volume medical facility, and it sounds like it's a very good company. Their goals are very noble and everything else, but I still don't understand why they can't put this facility in an area that's already known for medical use. I mean, we, they described it as a high, as a quality medical facility, and they're drastically changing our neighborhood. It's, you know, we've got residential and commercial now, we said we're going to be a medical facility right in the middle, and we also don't know what will be the other half of that building. So again, there's a lot of concern, I've talked with other neighbors, but the idea is that we've got a lot of people moving in and out, and we're changing what's going on in our neighborhood, and it seems like they're saving some money by buying that building rather than trying to locate a facility more in the area, say closer to the hospital or someplace that's already some property.
Questions, Mr. Pachsky, councilmember Purcell.
Thank you very much for your comments, I appreciate you taking the time to come up here, come to the meeting, and give us the comments. And I can understand your concerns, and some of the concerns that you have are very valid concerns that I had at the beginning of this process as well. I guess my question for you is, you just said that it's going to change the nature of our community, and I agree with you. We're going to go from a vacant building to a very nice facility that they're going to pump three to four million dollars into. So I guess my question is, and understanding, maybe the police chief can talk a little bit more to this, but typically crime is higher when you have a vacant building than an occupied building. So I guess what are some specific concerns that you and your neighbors have about this facility going in there?
It's just going to be open fourteen hours a day, there's going to be a lot of people moving in and out of there. You know, be a constant turnover of people that we all know. Even when there's a furniture store there, and there's still a furniture store across the street from Lake, and yet, you know, commercial things. I mean, you get a feel for what's happening, I mean, what kind of people shop, how many people come, you know, things like that. I mean, you understand the routine of the commercial buildings, the furniture stores. I mean, you understand the routine of the commercial buildings, the furniture stores, the other type of stores. Right now, all we're seeing is we have a lot of people moving in and out, we don't know who they are, they're open fourteen hours a day, I wasn't sure if it's six or seven days a week. And they're going to be handling a lot of medical things, a lot of medical waste will be generated, which is completely unknown to us, and we have concerns.
And I appreciate it.
Councilmember, I think you need to make sure you don't get into a debate here with anybody coming up to test.
Absolutely, absolutely, Mayor, and I do apologize, like I said at the beginning, I appreciate you coming forward and sharing your concerns with us, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just add something real quick.
Councilmember Zell.
Just to answer your questions, Monday through Saturday from six to eight PM, Sunday eight to five, so that's what we have in our table.
Very good. Anybody else in the audience who can come up and address council with your thoughts, do you hear in favor or in opposition, favor or opposition to this proposal? Anyone else? Say none, we're closing this public hearing, we'll move on to the regular council agenda. We are back to legislation under item three, a full liquor license for Pirates Cove, Councilmember Heine.
Yes, move for first reading on the liquor license for Westportly LLC DBA Pirates Cove ten, seven thirty-one, Margate Hall.
Second.
Motion's made second for a full liquor license for Westportly LLC DBA Business as Pirates Cove at ten, seven thirty-one, Margate, Margate Gate Drive. Councilmember Heine.
This is an application for full liquor license for this establishment, this is only for a change in the managing officer. This is the first consideration, so I'd like to ask to move this to table.
Second. Motion's made second, eight, those in favor of signature by the same nine.
Aye.
Opposed, standing, motion carries, Councilmember Heine, three, eight.
Yes, first reading for liquor license application for the Mad Crab LLC twelve, four ninety, St. Charles Rock Road, managing officer Anne Ho.
Second.
Motion's made second for a full beer and wine license, a Sunday license for Mad Crab LLC at twelve, four ninety, St. Charles Rock Road. Councilmember Heine.
This is a new restaurant in, moving into Bridgestone where Fabrics used to be in one eighty Bar and Grill. They have an existing restaurant in University City, they are requesting a beer and all wine liquor license, by the drink and Sunday license as well. This is first consideration, first reading, I'd like to move this to the table.
Second. Motion's made second at table, those in favor of signature by the same nine.
Aye.
Opposed, standing, motion carries, good approvals, Councilmember Heine.
Thank you, I move, the city approves the bid submitted by Westport Pools in the amount of seven thousand three hundred fifty dollars for the installation of new VGBA compliant pool grids.
Second. Second, eight, thank you. Motion's made seconded for a bidder approval for VGBA drain cover replacement for the outdoor pool, Councilmember Norris.
It was recommended, it's the low bidder, the installation proposal meets all the specifications and the cost is within specified budget amount, so I will vote yes.
Further comments or questions, those in favor of signature by the same nine?
Aye.
Opposed, standing, motion carries. Professional bills, Councilmember Ebert.
Move for second reading of bill six-two-zero-three.
Second.
Motion's made second for a second reading of bill sixty-two-zero-three, those in favor of signature by the same nine?
Aye.
Opposed, standing, motion carries, Councilmember Ebert.
In honor of the city council of the city of Bridgestone, Missouri, application number nineteen dash PZ dash O two to reserve approximately six point nine five acres of land located at thirty-four sixteen PP Road from our two single-family dwelling to PUD planned single-family residential unit developed to allow for a thirty-lot attached single-family development.
Second.
Thank you, I mean, we did, we did a second reading. Do you have a substitute?
Okay, I thought you were, okay.
We did a second reading, so.
I know, I thought you were going to vote on.
Well, I told me to vote on it.
Okay, I'm on the table tonight.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm on the table tonight, you'll see a new bill for this item, and so I'd like to move, substitute the new bill for the one I just, for the old one. Nothing has changed, you know, in the heading, it's only a whereas that has changed. And I have no discussion on it.
So councilwoman Abrams has recommended a substitute, an amendment to the proposal that was brought to present to council for tonight. Councilmember Norris, second. So that's where we stand, right now we're at the point of accepting the amendment, does council have a point on this one?
No, I was just preparing to ask you.
Councilmember Satell.
This is just about the amendment then right now?
Okay, just on the amendment. Any further comments or questions on the amendment? Do we all understand it, Mr. Greitens, Councilmember Grimmer?
I'd like the chance to kind of stutter the amendment.
Right, we have Mr. Greitens come up and the city attorney kind of go through the amendment.
We can table it.
Basic points of it, I think everybody got a pack of their, their place.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, so the real difference between this bill and the bill that was introduced at the last meeting is the plan that's attached to the ordinance and it's currently on the, on the screen in front of you. If the council elects to move forward and amend the bill by substituting in this new plan, my understanding is, is that Ms. Abrams intends to move the table immediately after this is amended, the council's not going to be asked to vote on this plan. In fact, what we will do, because it's a significant change in my view from the plan that was introduced in the last meeting, is that at the next meeting on June fifth, there will be another public hearing on this, so you'll have the opportunity in the next three weeks to review this plan that's substituted in tonight, if you vote to do that. Public will have, it's going to be re-noticed this week in the paper so that the public will have an opportunity to comment again on this new revised plan, and then you would be, presumably you would remove it from the table at that June fifth meeting debate and vote on the revised plan at the next meeting.
Councilmembers.
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Satell, did you have a question about what we're doing?
Yes, I do, before we amend this to accept this as an amendment, if there's still more changes that need to be made, do we still have any?
We're not going to vote, the procedure tonight will be, if I recognize Councilmember Ebert, we're going to table.
No, it's to accept this amendment before we table, right, are we going to go vote on the amendment?
No, not currently.
You would vote on the amendment.
We are going to vote, my apologies.
But if, so if the amendment passes, then I think your question, no, that's not the last chance to amend it.
I prefer that we have time to look at this amendment, we're supposed to be voting for this amendment, you just got to handle it.
Here's the issue with that, is that because there are significant changes to this, in my view, compared to the one that was introduced, I believe that the council, to be, to make sure that we're giving the public as much opportunity as possible to participate in the process and to comment on a new plan, we need to have a new public hearing if council's going to consider a significant change to the plan. And in order to hold a public hearing at the next meeting, this new plan needs to be in front of council.
Okay.
And so it's really, in my view, no different than if it was being introduced this way for the first time tonight.
Okay.
The only difference is, it's already received two readings, so once the next public hearing would be held on the fifth, you would just, you wouldn't read it again, you would just debate it and vote.
Unless we table it again.
You could table again, you could move to amend it again, you could do anything that you could do the first time.
No problem.
So we all understand, so we're voting on the amendment to the plan as originally proposed.
So that there can be a public hearing.
So there'll be a public hearing to amaze on the fifth. Councilmember Purcell.
Just so I'm clear, we're voting to amend it. By amending it, we're essentially substituting this new thing that we were handed ten minutes ago for the bill that has now already been read twice.
Right.
At the next meeting, we would read, we would debate the amendment going forward, but the original plan, if we pass this amendment, is dead, is that my understanding?
Yes, that's correct.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, any further comments? Those in favor of the amended plan, signify by the same nine?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Roco.
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 Okay, we can do the roco.
Mr. Grimmer.
Aye.
Mr. Heine.
Aye.
Mrs. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Purcell.
Aye.
Mr. Satell.
I will vote aye, because I want to see the public here, thank you.
Mr. Zimmer.
Aye.
Mrs. Abrams.
Aye.
I vote a sudden nothing, you're recommending the plan as originally proposed, and we will bring this up at a public hearing on June the fifth.
We want to move to table.
Second.
Motion's made second at table, those in favor of signature by the same nine?
Aye.
Opposed, standing, motion carries, for those that are interested in this, you can get some plans, I'll give you one line or something if you want to look at. All right, consideration of new bills, Councilmember Abrams.
Move for first reading of bill six-two-zero-four.
Second.
Motion's made second, consideration of bill sixty-two-zero-four, Councilmember Abrams.
In honor of the city council of the city of Bridgestone, Missouri, application number nineteen dash PZ dash O four establishing a special use permit for medical clinic to allow a plasma donation facility located at thirty-seven fifteen North Linder Blomberg.
Second.
Move to table.
Hold on, second.
Second.
Second, those in favor, say by the same nine?
Aye.
Opposed, standing, motion carries, now we're going to table.
I have a question.
All right.
On that last one, we didn't move it into an ordinance.
No, that's right, we shouldn't.
So I could wait, okay, very good. Hey, move to table on it, second again.
Motion's made second at table of bill sixty-two-zero-four, those in favor of signature by the same nine?
Aye.
Okay, we're standing, motion carries, Councilmember Heine.
Okay, move for first reading of bill number sixty-two-oh-five.
Second.
Motion's made second at the first reading of bill sixty-two-oh-five, Councilmember Heine.
Sixty-two-oh-five, a bill authorizing an agreement with J M Merishuk's Construction Company for the construction replacement project. This would basically cover Green Hall, basically in Whitehall Manor, Dryer Hall, Crystal Hall, Margaret Hall, Saxon Hall, Borlitz Hall, and Whitehall Manor Drive. First reading, move to table.
Second.
Motion's made second at table, bill sixty-two-oh-five, those in favor of signature by the same nine?
Aye.
Opposed, standing, motion carries, we are down to reports, the attorney's report.
Nothing to report this evening.
Very good, council communications, the start of Councilmember Heine.
Yes, I had sent out, as president of the council, I had sent out an email to the council about what are required each year or after each election to examine the rules. We had a rules committee last year, unfortunately that committee did not meet, and I have a request from the serving chairman of that committee to reinstate the committee this year with the council's approval, and I've talked to several of you already about this, I'd like to reinstate the committee as it was with Ms. Abrams serving as chairman, I believe Councilman Heine served on the committee, Councilman Purcell served on the committee, let's see, and you on that, and Councilman Satell. If you would all agree to re-serve on that committee, I'd like to reinstate, formally reinstate the committee.
Thanks, Dave.
In favor, aye, please?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, that's it, very good. Councilmember Purcell.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to start by thanking everybody for being here, I appreciate everybody coming out, taking an interest in your local government and, you know, perpetuating your concerns, you know, with our city and how it's run. If anybody may be watching this online in the future, again, thank you for tuning in, I appreciate it. I appreciate the reappointment, I guess, by Councilmember Grimmer to the committee, I look forward to serving on that, and that is all I have to say.
Very good, Councilmember Satell.
A few things, I guess we'll have our new hearing three weeks from now about this section on PP Road. Seems like lots going on on PP Road right now, the plasma thing also, so, sorry, we're listening to a lot of citizens, you know, Scott and I both, and we talk to them, you know, face to face, sometimes it's on Facebook, but, you know, we are listening to all of them and try to talk and voice their opinions, so I'm appreciative of the ones that spoke up tonight and/or the ones that are at least here to listen, even though they didn't speak, that's okay too, on both those issues. Another issue we had, we talked about earlier this spring, that kind of ties to the subdivision, we had a fence issue down there in Myers Acres about a couple of months ago, and I noticed that the fence still hasn't been moved or changed, and then also, we're talking about a potential retaining wall that they finished up down there and they're still a tall fifteen-foot block wall at Myers Acres, still without a fence at the top, which is required by our code because it's over four feet tall, and I've had complaints from some of the citizens to back up to the ground well. So just wondering if we could get an update on both of those fences. The one that the homeowner still hasn't moved away from the, he was supposed to put it ten feet from the sidewalk, it's still at the one-foot level, and that's been a couple of months.
Okay.
Then the other thing I was wondering if we could, I love our tall grass list, but I was wondering if we could, again, have some of our staff take a look at some of the, they're doing a pretty good job of keeping grass cut at some of our retention ponds, but there's a lot of tall three to six-foot weeds that are growing between a lot of the fences and it's not just one retention pond, it's a couple of them that I've seen, so maybe we can have some city staff take a look and make recommendations to the homeowners associations to get some of those retention pond areas cleaned up, it's common ground, we should be the one kind of pushing it and enforcing it, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Zell.
Yes, thank you, people for coming in, we appreciate it. One, I'm on the design review now, and one of the items coming up out of the eight that Joni handed me last time is the Spirit Church, the large church over at Northwest Plaza. They're going to be coming to us asking for a couple more signs and, so just look forward to that. It looks like it's a reasonable thing to have, but just warning you it's coming. And thanks again for coming, we appreciate it, this is the award one, people.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Norris.
You're going to be shocked.
Nothing.
Oh, wow.
Councilmember Ebert.
Yes, sir, the mayor had started collecting for the volunteer luncheon that we're going to have for the people to volunteer for our city, and this year, he put in a hundred dollars and we, I got first to put in twenty, it's a rascal. And I only received two, three people, so. And if you don't have it tonight, I'm going to give this envelope back to the mayor and he can give it to Kevin and, so, he can give it to Kevin.
Very good.
And we appreciate the donations and we appreciate our mayor, he gives to everything, so, he's really generous.
Good job, we're not telling everyone, that's fine.
Well, I'm calling.
That's not it, I.
No, I'm not telling.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You want to move on because I complimented you, right, you're embarrassed. Memorial Day, I want to wish everybody a nice Memorial Day and hope you have some good barbecue or something. And I want to say the police are doing a wonderful job on watching, getting the speeders, giving them warnings, giving them speeding tickets, and in fact, today, they were over there, one of them was, and I heard them, they go off stopping somebody, so it has really helped, and the other streets that we're going to do, I hope it helps just as much. So I want to compliment them for, they got it down real good, so.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Okay, I apologize, I didn't need to cut you off before.
That's the one.
Thank you, I'll probably make up for Joni's. Thank you constituents for being here and going through the presentation, nice job, by the way. And, let's see, I was concerned about the I-270 project, what's going on, and if you're interested, there's, you can go on their website. And if you're interested, there's, you can go on their website, which is i270north.org, and be updated. And you can also request for any updates to be sent to you via email. I went to Mass with my mother Sunday on Mother's Day, and they asked for prayers for people in the parish that are ill or sick. And Craig Beisterfield's name came up, and I confirmed with the attorney tonight of the same Craig Beisterfield. So keep him and his family in your prayers. Council President, Mr. Brimmer, I'm glad to see that you're gonna continue the council rules. I'd also like to see, hopefully, you continue the Residential Stormwater Subcommittee. And then, before the council meeting started, I put on everybody's place the five-year plan, which has not been addressed since 2012 or 13. And I don't think Mr. Purcell had it, so now you have it. So I don't know if we need to go back and start reviewing, see what's been updated, or see what's been completed or not. But just wanted to present that to you tonight to think about in the future. Public Works, are the two daycare centers now open on Pen Ridge? I know one's north of the Rock Road, and one was south of the Rock Road. I didn't, I think only one of them's open, but I'm not sure. And then the Parks Department, has the splash pad been installed yet in, in the pool, outdoor pool area? And then I also, Carol told me that this would be on our next agenda, the community development block grant. And then the Police Department, I ran into a constituent the other night while watching the hockey game. He lives on Magella, and he voiced to me his concerns about the speeding on Magella. He's the first house on the left as you enter Magella from Natural Bridge. And I asked him to come up and speak during the public portion. He's not here, so. Anyway, and then Chief, I was wondering how many openings we currently have for police officers and dispatchers. Administration, any news on the power plugs? And are we still on weekly calls with the EPA or Missouri Department of Natural Resources on the teleconferences? Are we planning a mid-year budget update in June? And also regarding the comprehensive plan, I just copied one page and put it on your desk. My feeling is, the first three items on there that people answered the survey to back in 2013 when we came up with the comprehensive plan or updated it, if we can concentrate on those areas, I think it would be a big plus for our city and would probably help achieve the goals on the other items that are listed on that. And my big pet peeve is I-270 and I-120 Rock Road, keeping it clean and keeping it mowed, the right of ways there. So I'd like to keep considering putting some money in the budget for us to pay for a private person to mow it more than Mow dot does, which would also include picking up the trash. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. The public reports, we'll start with you, Brandon.
Just wanted to let you know that all, excuse me, all four of the golf carts have been received at Berry Hill. And they're very nice, got many compliments from the players for the quality of the cars. And wanted to give mention to the Pattonville School District students that helped us. We hosted our annual community service day on Counter Park last week, and they helped us, one of the student classes came out and helped us spread the, it's called kitty cushion, it goes around the playground. You saw that big, huge hill there, jetty, so they come out and they help us every year spread it. So that was very nice of them. Wanted to give them a mention. As far as the splash pad, that was last year's budget, and that was, that was installed.
Very good. Thank you. Chief?
Okay, I have several things to go over. Friday morning, we're going to have the cop on the roof, and it has to be celebrated for special events that we're going from 5:00 AM until noon. So we hope to see everybody stop by. We were going to be canceling the July 3rd Business Watch meeting, the holiday, so we will get that notice out, make sure it gets posted on the website, and, excuse me, and post it out front, so we can get that off the calendar. Robert, can you put up the photo there for me, please? Officer Tavis Nelson received the John J. McAtter Award at a ceremony this past week. And she received this award for her compassion dealing with a person in crisis that was going to jump off the overpass on I-270 from the town. And the thing that's so touching about this is that he didn't even know her name. He wrote a letter and asked her to send it to a different police agency. And that agency was so moved by that letter that they did research and found out it was in our venue. And in that letter, he talks about giving his daughter their father's life. We've had many officers receive this award over the years. But this one really touched on it, and I'm very proud of the work that they do.
Yep.
And on her note, Bob Whacker passed away yesterday morning. He lost his battle with cancer. He served in the city for 36 years, and he retired in 2007. So please keep his family in your breath.
Thank you, Chief. Robert on the street, I'm sorry. Councilmember Satell?
One question on the police. We had a accident with one of our police vehicles being totaled. Are we picking up another one, or is it insurance or whatever?
They can see it for the insurance.
All right, just addressing that, 'cause maybe we're a vehicle shark, that's just my memory. Thanks.
Mayor, do you want me to address the openings on the police department then?
Go ahead.
Okay, we do have two current openings for police officers. We are gonna be testing the 16th. We have five good applicants that we're going to test. We have one open, full-time dispatcher position, and then we supplement it with part-time positions. And we don't know how many part-time positions we're going to have, because we don't know how long we're going to be able to work. So we supplement our positions by the number of people, so we can cover all the hours. So maybe four part-timers, or maybe six, depending upon their availability. And relative to the EPA conference that we do, we just finished the every other week schedule. Because of the scheduled work that's going to be at the landfill over the summer, we're going to be receiving an email update and scheduling a conference every other month. But if something comes up, then we're deploying a meeting and get on that particular subject right away. So as it stands right now, we'll be notified with the work scheduled and work to be done by email. But then we'll actually have a teleconference every other month.
Very good. Councilmember Zimmer?
I just wanted to mention the Bridgeton Facebook page, and how much we appreciate you having that and responding to people asking you questions on it. I think it's really great for the people out there. So hopefully, I don't know who answers that in your department or how you work it, but it looks like there's questions being answered. And, you know, I think it's a good thing for the city to have, and hopefully, we'll keep it up.
So I'm sure they will. Don't believe they have to be answering any of the questions. That's way out of my league.
Very good. Any further questions on police? We'll turn now to Streets and Public Works, Robert?
I'll check with the daycares, what's scheduled when you open it up, and make sure that they've been inspected and they're all open right at this time and it's all right.
You had a couple questions, some other ones too. On I-270, was yours a question or just a statement?
No, just a statement.
Okay. Mr. Hookout?
I don't need this time here.
Very good. In the interest of time, I'm gonna be real quick with mine on the landfill. I had a conference call with the regional administrator last week. The participating parties, which there are three, which are the landfill itself, Republic, Cottin, or Carr, I'm sorry, it's Carr group, and then the Department of Energy, or what they call the participating parties. They have agreed to an engineering firm that will start to work on design of where they will dig and excavate and remove the soil that's contaminated. It'll take anywhere from 18 to 24 months. After that particular time, then we'll actually see, so and so, the excavation material out of the Bridgeton landfill. And I want to mention Bridgeton landfill, it's not really part of the city, it just happens to be its name. So they are progressing slowly but surely forward in terms of addressing that major issue that we have in our city. Lastly, I also would like to extend my congratulations to Tammy. It was a, I attended along with the city administrator. It's a very busy ceremony in which a lot of times we don't hear about what the police do in our communities that are very helpful to everyone. And that it's not all about shootings and chases on cars and everything like that. The people that we're honored, including Tammy, go out of their way to try and help individuals who suffer some type of mental disease. And in the case of our officer there, she saved a man's life. And that, that particular individual had the courtesy and kindness to write back and say, "Look, the police did this and they saved his life." He, in his letter, called Tammy his guardian angel. So I think more of those stories need to be out there, so the public gets an idea that the police are there, and there are assistance and friendship. And I appreciate that. One last item, because of some litigation, I need to have a closed session of the council tonight. So someone with police make a motion to close, go on and lawsuit.
Okay, we give a big bang back.
I hope that we go into closed session. Kind of give us some reason.
Yeah.
It's gonna be hard for that guy.
Okay.
And a closed session may discuss matters related to, one, legal actions, litigation, or confidential or privileged communications with counsel pursuant to Section 610-021 RSMO.
Is there a second?
Is that a session?
Motion's made second for a closed session to discuss legal actions, litigation, confidential or privileged communications. Clerk of Power.
Mr. Hein?
Aye.
Mrs. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Purcell?
Aye.
Mr. Satell?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Abrams?
Aye.
Mr. Brimmer?
Aye. By your vote, seven to nothing, we do go into closed session. Thank you all very much. Thank you, folks.